I guess we can call the meeting to order and read the item to the record. So, let's do that. Are we ready? Okay, I will hereby call the special meeting of Glendale City Council of September 26th to order at 3:30 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Council members, as Adrian.
Here.
Devine, Kasakian, Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Botman.
Here. And could we have your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for the Tuesday, September 26, 2023, special public meeting of the city council was posted on September 21, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay. And would you read the first item into the record, please?
Yes, the first item is community development regarding use of city days at the Alex Theater, Wild Honey Foundation. A motion to approve use of one of 12 annual city days at the Alex Theater for Wild Honey Foundation's unforgettable sunrise event on September 30, 2023, and to cover the costs associated with labor and additional equipment rentals at the theater for the day.
Thank you. And let the record show that Councilmember Devine is present for this meeting because we called roll call while you were out. No, no, no. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Mayor Botman, members of City Council. The Wild Honey Foundation has recently requested the city sponsorship for their event on September 30, as it was read into record, to present a show at the Alex Theater. The city sponsorship would come by way of utilizing one of the 12 annual city dates to host this event, plus the cost of labor and additional equipment rentals for the day that could cost up to $15,000. The city has already approved four other dates of use, including the Arts Fundraiser, the Armenian Genocide Commemoration, Armenian Independence Day Celebration, and lastly, the Project LA Show in December. So now staff is seeking council's direction on this request from the Wild Honey Foundation. I believe they have representatives in the audience that may want to speak on this item. Tamara Saad and Bradley Calvert are also available to respond to your questions.
Okay. Ms. Saad, you're going to make a brief report?
I don't have additional content unless the council has questions.
I just have a few, if you don't mind. I recognize that this event is on the 30th of September, which is just a few days away. Do we know how many tickets have been sold?
As of yesterday, there was 187 tickets that had been sold for the show. And this was a more recent request than we would prefer. So, you know, we would bring back an item to formalize the process of making requests. But we did receive the request and staff did make the effort to get before the council before the event took place.
When was the request submitted?
I believe it was late last week.
Yes, Councilmember Saad, it was a request that was sent to Mayor Botman sometime last week. And yes, Ms. Saad is absolutely right. It's shorter notice than we would have preferred. And in the future, what the report that staff will bring back will formalize it to make sure that other organizations will give us and the Alex Theater enough sufficient advance notice.
Okay. Any questions? We do have... Do we have any cards? Have the speakers put in cards to speak?
We do not. We don't have any cards or callers.
Okay. I know this request came... Did it just come to me or did it come to all of us?
I believe it just came to you, Mr. Botman, Mayor Botman.
Anyway, I know it came in, I think, on the 19th, was it? Was it the 19th?
I'll have to check the exact date, but it was last week.
I know it was on my vacation and I...
Right.
Although I swore up and down I wouldn't be checking emails, I did check emails. So I saw it and I forwarded on really so I could understand better what our procedures are for this kind of thing because there was in the email a reference to us providing this kind of opportunity to Horizon TV for a show in December, right?
Yes.
But when I sent it, I didn't really pay attention to, you know, the timing of it and the fact that this being this Friday, or this?
Yeah, Friday.
Friday.
Saturday, sorry, Saturday.
Okay. I, you know, I don't know. It's so short notice and I wish we had known about this earlier. But anyway, that's just... So I'm actually... I was surprised to see that it came forward because I just... I think it is very short notice and I don't see how we can accommodate that. Yeah, you can speak and then fill out the card afterwards, right? Just...
Just at one point.
Yeah, if you would just state your name and you have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Paul Rock. I'm the founder of Wild Honey Foundation. The reason of the timing was I did not know about this program until very, very last minute. And I had no clue to it until a person informed me of it, who knows of these things. And that's why it's late. I've done it earlier. This is a difficult show for us because it's original music and that's always a much harder sell. And we... But it's certainly getting a lot of acclaim and a lot of press attention. And so, you know, we have an LA Times article coming up. We have a KTLA piece coming up. So we have a lot of attention that's going to be brought to the Alex vis a vis the promotion for this show. So I think the city will get benefit out of that. And also, the autistic community is very inspired by this event because my son has created this work. And he's... And with Rob Loffer. And I think it's an important piece for the autism community and everyone who should know about the capabilities of the autism community, especially the nonverbal community. And that's how we... Most people know about artistic accomplishments of verbal autistic people, but nonverbal, not so much. And we've really broken some ground with this piece. So I think it's a really worthwhile piece for the city to fund. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I did click on the YouTube and I watched whatever it was. There was some performance.
Right, there was a rehearsal.
A rehearsal.
Yeah.
And it was very impressive and, you know, it's something that I know I would want to support in other circumstances. I think this is just for my... I'm speaking for myself. I think it's just too late in the game. I don't even know what... I mean, what is staff's view on the timing and what kind of issues is at risk?
Mayor Botman, Mayor City Council, initially staff's view was it was short notice and communication and Mr. Miles is... Mike Davis is here. Williams is here as well. He can speak to it. But I do believe I just today found out that they may be able to accommodate it, but they have to really get started fairly soon and it'll be difficult.
Does that... Excuse me, City Manager, does that mean that they've been selling tickets but they're not really ready for the show? It's on Friday?
If I may, I'm sorry. The timing that Mr. Galanian was speaking of is actually on staff's end. So this show is on sale. It has been on sale with Alex Theater. And the concern for timing is on staff's end because we don't budget for these. These are, you know, we have to look at our budgets and make sure that we can accommodate the request. It is $15,000. To elaborate a little bit more on the process, as part of our contract with SAS, we were allotted these 12 days. As Mayor Botman indicated and Mr. Rock, they weren't aware of like the details of the process. This is something that works with our annual report for the Alex Theater. This year, we will bring back a formalized list of how these requests can be made. We will list on the Alex's website if there is an organization that is seeking city sponsorship, which is what this is, is city sponsorship, that they can contact me. I am the liaison to the theater and hopefully those requests are then put in in a more timely process. We would request 60 days so that staff... We're working on the details. I would request 60 days so staff has time to actually look at our budget and ensure that we are hitting all of the... We are able to cover this within our community development budget. So we will bring that formal process to you in November when we bring the annual report for the Alex Theater. And because we received the request, we did rush to accommodate it. This is shorter than we would like. And like Mr. Rock said, you know, he wasn't aware that this was... And it's not something for the Alex Theater to offer because it's... Those are our dates as a city. So I do want to make that clear. It is something that is part of our contract with them and something that the city would need to vet before the council and the council decide if this is something the city wants to sponsor or not. We would not want the Alex Theater necessarily offering something that's ours.
Councilmember Devine, in response to your question, and Ms. Saad can confirm it. I assume that the show was already scheduled for September 30 with organizers are asking for is the sponsorship of the city. That's why they were able to sell those tickets. It's already been scheduled.
The show will go on regardless. It's a matter of whether we sponsor it and, again, just speaking for myself, I would just like to say that I would like to see that we have a process for this so that we can be more proactive in deciding how we want to use our 12 days. And I would certainly, you know, welcome Wild Honey Foundation coming forward with a future request for a show, a subsequent show. And I think it would be looked on favorably. I would rather... That would be... I'm not comfortable doing this like this last minute, especially in a situation where, you know, we just haven't had the time to get our heads around, you know, how we want to work this process. So that's... I don't know. Did you have any other comment?
I share in your concerns. I think especially when we're talking about city sponsorships, what that sponsorship looks like is something that I'd also like to see as part of the process. There has to... It can't just be, you know, given and then the group that's putting it together decides what they do to promote that sponsorship. And so I recognize that this event is just a few days away. I also want to make sure that this process includes how it fits into our council priorities and things that we want to promote and things that the city wants. I think the whole point of having these 12 days was to allow for community organizations and groups that brings something to the table that's important to the community, regardless of what it is. It can be autism. It can be mental health support or anything else out there. But I think without a process and I think also given like the number of tickets, it almost feels like this coming last second and it's not a matter of us just sponsoring the event, but it's also like just covering costs because I seen the report that it notes that funds have always gone to the foundation, but I can't imagine that. I don't know what the financials will look like, but it doesn't look like that'll be the case, so.
Okay, so what do we do as far as, I mean, a motion?
Mayor Botman, yeah, we're just seeking direction. Whether you approve the motion or not.
Is there... Is there anybody that wants to move to approve this? No? Well, seeing that, I don't know, I haven't done it quite this way, but I guess it fails or it doesn't get moved at all. So we have no action. Is that right?
No, wouldn't it be alternative two?
Is there an alternate? Okay.
Yeah, so it's alternate, do not approve utilization.
You're just not approving?
But you don't need to make a motion for that.
We don't need to make a motion for that, right? So we just conclude the item and, okay, and, yeah, okay.
And your points are well taken. We will bring a staff report to formalize the entire process and we'll promote it so other organizations will know that this is available so they can compete for it and then it'll be council's direction for those 12 days.
But I think just like any other, as I was noting, like just like any other sponsorship package we would have, I think it should, you know, within that process, we should identify exactly what it is that we would be getting. So it's the same thing across the board when we're giving these out to organizations in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, what is the next item, please?
The next item is Public Works Regarding Slow Streets Pilot Program Evaluation. A motion authorizing the discontinuation of the Slow Streets program and affirming the city's commitment to addressing traffic safety needs in the community.
Okay, Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Botman, Mayor City Council, staff has collected data and analyzed the Slow Streets pilot program that showed the program's impact on speed reduction has been minimal and hence the recommendation to reconsider the continuation of this program and instead explore alternatives to address concerns regarding pedestrian safety and mobility. With that, alternate over to Pastor Casanova, our traffic engineer, to present the item for your consideration.
Is this on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mayor Botman and members of the city council, this is a brief presentation on the status and recommendations of the permanent Slow Streets program. Here is a timeline chart that shows starting after staff received direction from the city council to move forward with the permanent Slow Streets program. A contract was awarded in April of 2022 for installation and maintenance of the program. The Phase One sign installations were completed in June of 2022, and in October of 2022, staff returned to the city council with an update. That update included lessons learned such as proximity of the signs to intersections, turning problems encountered with larger vehicles, and staff's recommendations to use a stronger sign material. The city council then directed staff to develop a pilot program incorporating some of these lessons learned and then evaluating the pilot program. Staff then developed the three pilot program configurations of the sign assemblies incorporating the lessons learned. The new sign installations were completed in March of this year. And staff followed up with the evaluation of the sign assemblies, including taking before and after speed and traffic volume counts, as well as taking into account the operational impacts. And that brings us here today to discuss staff's findings and recommendations. The pilot program included the development and installation of three sign configurations. These configurations were installed along 12 street segments and a total of 24 individual sign assembly locations. The locations are outlined in the matrix to the left, and on the right is a vicinity map showing the 12 street segments within the perimeter of the city, with six being in South Glendale and six in North Glendale. Here are pictures of what the sign configurations look like. This is the Type B configuration that included one sign post with flashing reflective pavement markers in front and behind the sign. This installation was used on 36-foot wide streets with short spacing between driveways. This is the Type C configuration that included the sign, K-71 traffic post in front and behind the sign, and flashing reflective pavement markers. This installation was used on 36-foot wide streets with wider spacing between driveway This is the Type D configuration that included the sign, K-71 traffic posts surrounding the sign, reflective pavement markers, and yellow striping approaching the sign assembly. This installation was used on 40-foot wide streets with much wider spacing between driveways that could accommodate the additional traffic posts and the striping approaches.
Quick question. How many of those Ds did you install?
There were a total of 12 locations split into three, so four of each type of assembly.
Four of each?
There were four, yes. After installation, staff conducted an evaluation of the program. This evaluation included before and after speed and traffic volume counts, and the after counts were conducted at one and two months intervals after the installation and included traffic counts for five consecutive days. Staff also received feedback and concerns over this period of time and beyond from local residents with driveways near the signs, as well as trash pickup personnel and the fire department regarding impacts to their operations and emergency services. Staff also met with residents at problem locations to review their concerns and with the fire department to observe the impact to their operations. This is in overview. Sorry, here are highlights of staff's findings that showed an average speed reduction of around two miles per hour. There are no reductions in the vehicular volumes and...
Can I just interrupt you there? Sorry. Because you have these different, you know, configurations.
Yes.
So you say average speed reduction, but can you tell us, for example, the Ds? Like, was it the same? The Ds and the As and the Bs, were they all the same in terms of speed reduction?
Yes, Mayor Botman, members of the city council, we don't have that breakdown for you here today. What that represents is an average of all 12 locations or, I'm sorry, of the four locations that were part of the evaluation.
Of the four locations?
Yes.
So you only evaluated four of the 12?
Correct. There were four street segments that were before and after traffic counts, and there were one of each type of location and possibly two of the same. The locations were Columbus, Isabel, Orange Grove, and Allen that were part of the study.
So you only evaluated one of the Type Ts?
Yes, that would be correct. That's on the list.
But you can't... I mean, you did these different ones, I thought, because you wanted to see how they operate differently. But you can't tell us what the different experiences are between these four models?
Yes, Mayor Botman, members of the city council, the intent for the three different or the different types of installations that were presented were really to accommodate the different types of street infrastructure that we have. The widths of the street, the proximities of the driveways, and being able to fit slow street sign assemblies into these variations in our street network. And so when this was evaluated, we evaluated, made sure to evaluate one of each to get some representative information for each of the types. So going on, so there was no reduction in the vehicular volume. There were impacts to the Glendale Fire Department emergency operations, as well as our maintenance services for trash pickup. We received concerns from residents that experienced difficulties entering and exiting their driveways due to the locations of the slow streets sign assemblies relative to their driveways, and complaints that the mirrors were being broken or knocked off because of traffic diverting around the signs. There were maintenance issues regarding graffiti on the assemblies, and our findings showed that over half, or 54% of the assemblies were partially damaged or hit, you know, by traffic or vandalized. The overall cost of the permanent Slow Streets program was $200,000. There's a breakdown on the screen that provides a breakdown of the original Phase One implementation, the follow-up implementation of the pilot project, and the cost for removal of the Slow Streets, as well as an estimate of staff time. Here are pictures that show some of the challenges that were encountered in the pilot project. We can see there's damage to the K-71 traffic post on the left picture. On the right picture, there were locations that were either obliterated or completely missing, whether it might have been hit or vandalized, but the signs were missing. There was graffiti at a location, as well as we can see how tight of a maneuver it could be for the trash trucks and similar findings. Staff noted similar findings for the fire trucks because, simply because of the width of the trucks and the variation of people parking adjacent to the curb. So after evaluating the benefits and the critical challenges of the program, staff is here today to respectfully recommend that the city council approve the motion to discontinue the Slow Streets program and authorize staff to remove the existing sign assemblies and striping while still continuing to focus on implementing recommendations of the citywide pedestrian plan, the bicycle transportation plan, and other applicable citywide plans that have been adopted by the city council. And that concludes the presentations, and we would be glad to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Devine?
Thank you. Has any thought been given? Well, I guess maybe I should start with this. On the Type D, have those been vandalized or hit as much as some of the others?
Mayor Botman, members of the city council, councilmember Devine, the Type D assemblies, which included the striping, fared up better than the others.
Okay. Has there been any thought of leaving those in place? I noticed at the end of the report, you said you're going to take all of them down. Any consideration of leaving those in place?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Devine. Public Works normally doesn't recommend installation of traffic control devices without a maintenance plan. So to leave them up, we would have to really think about a maintenance plan. If we otherwise just leave them out there until they get hit and knocked over, then we may be exposing us to other liability or risks.
Okay. First of all, the next item that I wanted to mention was on your pilot sign assembly Type C. Wait, no. Yeah. On the picture on the... And you could put it up on the right side. Yeah. That, you know, this situation is prevalent on Isabel and Doran. And I came around that corner one evening and there was a truck parked, and I could hardly, just like this trash truck, I could hardly get through. And I was... I thought, I know I'm going to hit something. And I came right in and I said, something has to be done because if cars park where these bollards are, we're asking for trouble. As far as I'm concerned, and also, when you mentioned 54% of the assemblies, 13 out of 24 were partially hit and damaged, you didn't mention how many times they were replaced. You know, you might have had one that was damaged, and it was damaged like three times, and you've replaced it three times. Is that possible?
And Councilmember Devine, that is correct.
Yeah, I figured. So I think actually you've given us, given me, anyway, six good reasons to end this program. It's costly and hazardous, and replacement is also an issue. So that's where I stand on this one. Thank you. Thank you for the answers.
Come from Chris Sackner?
Well, I'll say that my first interaction with it was the first day that they were put up. There was one actually right on my street, and people can make fun of me for being a slow driver, but if I wasn't driving so slow, I would have hit it. It was difficult for me to even maneuver around, and I know that by morning... I think it lasted about 12 hours. It was not only hit, and then I think our fire department had to move it because they couldn't get through. And so I think the only one that I maybe...
they, they couldn't get through. And so I think the only one that I maybe felt comfortable with, because I take, I think it's Dryden down, it's like Dryden and maybe Isabel. If I'm not mistaken, there's a, there's the one with a three around it. But it feels like if it's too tight for my small car, I don't know how trucks are going around it. And so I think there's valid reasons to not move forward. I would think that if we do have them up, instead of putting an effort now to remove them, it would be maybe worthwhile thinking about, you know, when they do need to be removed, when it's that time for maintenance, that's when we actually remove them, versus taking a proactive approach now to, to take them down for the ones that are there. So that, that's one thing that I would ask for us to consider. But otherwise, I think your reason's valid, and I've seen it firsthand, so.
What, what can you tell us about how LA DOT and Pasadena are managing their programs?
Mayor Brotman, members of the city council, we did look into that. The city of Pasadena's slow street program was discontinued in 2021.
And have they removed all the, all the treatments that they put in?
We would have to double, double back with them and check. We do know that the program was, was discontinued.
Okay, in LA, what do you know about LA?
LA, we researched what we could online. It shows that the slow streets program was paused, and their city council directed them to do more focused efforts on their slow streets network. But the program of slow streets, as they knew it developing from COVID, is paused.
Okay. Yeah, what I heard about it is that they are, they're not adding any locations, but they're maintaining the existing locations. So they're keeping it in place, just not expanding it. But I think the other thing that they do is, and, you know, I'm not really surprised that it hasn't done much to slow traffic. I think we all talked about this. If, if it's not constraining the roadway in any significant way, if it's just kind of unnoticed, please slow down, which most of these really are. I mean, it has as much effect as any other type of exhortation that's, you know, that's given, and, and that's very little effect. So I, I guess I'm not too surprised by it. I, I mean, I think, I, it feels to me that it's hasty, what we're doing, but if we are going to terminate this program, I think, I think we should kind of look at our, and I know this afternoon you're going to, or this evening, you're, you're coming with, with some changes to the toolkit for traffic coming. I think we should be looking at a whole range of treatments that we can, that we can put in that are quick build like this, that are low cost, easy to put in, similar to what LA does. So, you know, LA has all this, this whole palette of treatments that the engineers, you know, look at each kind of intersection and street segment and decide what's needed there. There's chokers, there are these things called like speed tables, there's, you know, raised crosswalks, there are chicane's, which is another kind of weird term, but I think it means like, like an island or something, or they're islands, you know, there's, there's a whole range of things that they do, very low cost. They just put these things out there. And, you know, traffic circles is another one, the small kind of quick build traffic circles. These don't cost a lot, don't take a lot to put in place. You're not putting, you're not pouring concrete, right? So I would think that if we are going to say no to slow streets, let's say yes to something else, which is a more robust palette of treatments that we put in that are quick build based, and, and that kind of more specifically target what that road segment or intersection requires. That's what I would like to see us do, because I think just to say, okay, no, we're going to just discontinue this, and we're just going to keep going, doing what we're going, what we've always been doing, we're going to continue to see the speeding and the collisions and the, and the deaths that we've seen on our roadways. I mean, we, our roads are dangerous, and we need to, we need to slow traffic down. And if this is not an effective way, we need to find another way that's effective, not just say, thank you very much, and, and we're not doing this anymore.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. You're absolutely correct. This is something that we're going to look at. This one experiment was something that we think made more sense during the pandemic, as people weren't using their cars as much. However, this experiment kind of showed us that at this time is, may not be as effective as evidenced by some of the other, bless you, some of the other cities that have discontinued this, or put it on pause. However, in the neighborhood traffic coming program, we do have a comprehensive toolkit, and we do try to use that. And tonight you'll see one more piece that we're going to add to that.
Right, but that toolkit is a pretty rigid toolkit, and it's, it's, basically it's four-way stops, it's speed bumps. Those are the things I hear about, really. I don't see, you know, kind of quick build curb extensions like this that are just bollards and paint. A lot of those kinds of things that LA is doing, I don't see us doing. And that's what should be in our toolkit, not just the stuff that's going to take years to, you know, where you have to pour concrete, and you're making permanent changes to the roadway, but things where you can put something out, and you can see how it, how it works, right? And that's what I, that's what we're not doing.
Yeah. Well, we, we do have other, other tools. You mentioned the traffic circles. We do look at those, and again, every, every treatment has its advantages and disadvantages. On the traffic circle, for example, it involves taking away some of the parking spots. So we try to coordinate with the, with the community before we do any of that. But your point is well taken, and we will look at all those treatments.
Okay. I also get somewhat concerned with this argument, this, this kind of fire department response time argument. And, you know, we've talked about this, and I showed you, and Mr. Galanian, I've talked to also Chief Ernst, right, about the problem is, fire departments very narrowly focus on, on response time, rather than focus on life safety more broadly, right? If you look at life safety more broadly, you want to slow traffic. That's what's really going to save lives. And so we need to find a balance here. But fire departments will always say they don't want any treatment that is going to potentially slow their passage. And, and that means that they're going to oppose most things that will slow streets and make the city safer. There's a trade-off, and, and we need to figure this out. But every time I read, you know, the fire department doesn't want this, doesn't want that because of, of response times, we need to think about what's on the other side of the coin. What are we giving up for that response time? Maybe we're giving up a life because our streets are too, are too unsafe. So I think that's, that's something we need to be cognizant of.
I just have a comment. You had this program on other streets than you've indicated. I, I know for sure you had it on Ethel, Ethel and Glen Oaks, and Ethel and Mountain at the entrances to there. I've seen them because I've, I've noticed that they were up one day, and then they were down the next. So I don't think your list is totally comprehensive. But I'm not sure that would change any of the, the results. I, yeah, I just don't think that this particular program is working, and we should put our efforts into finding something else that does work. I am, you know, I am concerned about, I am, I am concerned about response time. Most of our responses are medical emergencies, oftentimes taking a cardiac patient or someone else to the hospital where seconds do matter. I, you know, we had this discussion, we had this discussion years ago when we were talking about speed humps on Mountain Street, and this, the chief who came before us, I even forget who it was, it wasn't Gray, it was, I think it was an assistant chief at the time. I mean, they basically said that seconds do matter. They have someone in the vehicle that needs life, immediate life care. So it's a tough trade-off, and I'm not sure how that can adequately be, be measured. Maybe there is a measurement process out there, but anyway, that's, that's another discussion.
And, and, yeah, I don't want to create any misunderstanding. I'm also concerned about response times, and it, and it is a matter of trade-off. And I don't know, what's interesting is kind of the argument that some, some make is that fire department's mandate should be expanded to, to look at a broader thing, you know, not just, not just response times, but safety, you know, community safety overall. Sorry, my phone is ringing. So, yeah, it's a trade-off. It's tough. It's tough. But I think there has been a long history of fire departments standing in the way of things that can slow traffic in the name of response times, yet causing other, other negative impacts to , to, to community safety. So that's why we can't just look at one side of the coin. We need to look at the whole thing. That's, that's my point. But of course, yeah, we don't want to, we, we want to be able to respond to people's medical emergencies. Okay. But I guess there's a consensus to, to scrap the program. So is there a motion?
I'll move in.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Azadarian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kastakian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. Move to adjourn? Okay, give a second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned at 4:11 PM. Do we have, closed? No, closed. No, closed.
No closed session?
Okay. So back at six.